Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi Steph.
Good evening.
Greg, I will be stopping over probably tomorrow to town hall to sign the document that needs my signature. I think it's with Becky now.
Probably.
Because I think she said she was on vacation or she's out or.
Jen Welch, yeah, she's going to the Cape for a conference where she already left this afternoon.
Yeah, so. She was gonna, she was gonna leave it with Becky.
Very good.
Are we good for the boards and committee reappointments for one motion rather than having to do each individual?
Probably. Let me look at the, let me look at the motion.
Motion, I think, says as presented. I just don't want to be there for an hour going through each name.
Oh, good. No, I don't want that either. So yeah, I'd say just, I think you're good.
One motion.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, there's a lot.
Yes. Good evening, Jeff. Good evening, Chris.
Good evening.
Jeff's out in the, in the woods.
Got my background done. Let me get that taken care of.
Oh, no, it's fine. You look like Yogi, Yogi Bear.
It's a, it's a Bob Ross, actually. There we go. Back home.
Greg, why you look so serious?
I'm always serious. I think, and I, I, I just ate some dinner and I was like, man, why do I feel kind of out of it? It's because I took my dog for a walk right before that and I think the pollen is so bad, it just like gets everywhere. And I could feel my eyes itchy and my nose filling like just like that. Oh, so mother nature.
My niece, she and her husband have a motorcycle. And this weekend they went out on a motorcycle ride and she had on just a helmet without a, without a, whatever you call it.
Field.
Yeah, and she took a picture of herself when she got home. Her, her face was literally like, you know, the Wizard of Oz witch. It was green. She, you know, it, you wouldn't, you wouldn't necessarily notice it unless you, she showed it. And when she showed the picture, it was green.
Yes.
Yeah, it's rough out there.
Yeah. It's, it's 6:30, so we can move to go into, I'm not going to read the script unless you want me to. We can make a motion to go into an executive session in order to discuss strategy and negotiations with collective bargaining and non-union personnel. As an open session may have detrimental effects on the bargaining positions of town. We're going to be discussing Leuna Professionals and Public Works laborers, the IAFF firefighters, the fire chiefs, the director of public works and the assistant town administrator. And we will be returning to public session following the executive session. So to enter into executive session, we need a, a roll call vote. And Chris?
Do you have a motion? Who made the motion real quick?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Okay, and Chris?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. And when and if Armand makes his way in, just connect him through.
Will do.
I'm always afraid I'm gonna leave the meeting when I do that.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you for people who have been waiting. I'm gonna quickly do the script for the remote meetings. I'm David Gavin. Permit me to confirm that all members of persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. When I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Chris Silva.
Yes.
Armandier Pekirian. Didn't hear you, Armand.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Jeff Swanberg.
Yes.
Justine St. John.
Yes.
Okay. Greg Johnson, can you hear me?
Yep.
Megan Zamoto, can you hear me?
Yes.
Stephanie Duggan, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, and I don't know, do we have any other? All right. Good evening. This open meeting of the select board is being conducted via Zoom. Everybody on the agenda will be participating remotely. And we will allow for public comment when appropriate. We would like to hear public comments. If there's further action that's required by the board, I'll add the matter as appropriate to a forthcoming agenda. Depending on the comment, we may, if we're able, within the confines of the open meeting law, respond with information as opposed to needing to deliberate on the matter. Please note that should this meeting have encounter, individuals encounter technological problems that interrupt the virtual broadcast, the meeting will not be suspended unless it is otherwise required by law. The agenda was posted on the town meeting's website or the town's website and identified how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that everybody's participating via Zoom. Therefore, be aware that other people may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer as anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. All of the materials for this meeting, except for the executive session materials, were available on board docs. And we recommend that the members of the public follow the agenda as posted on board docs unless I know it otherwise. Before turning to the first item on the agenda, let me just cover a few ground rules. I'll introduce each speaker as they can. After they conclude their remarks, I'll go down the line of members, inviting everyone by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Please remember to mute your phone or your computer when you're not speaking. And please remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. Please wait until the floor is yielded to you and be sure to state your name before speaking. If anybody wishes to engage in colloquially with other members, please do so with care to identify yourself. And I don't think we have any public comment items other than regular public comments. I don't think we have any public meeting, public, open meeting law, public, whatever it's called. So we'll move on. Public comments is the first item on the agenda. So if there's any member of the public that wishes to speak and ask a question, make a comment, please feel free. I do not hear anybody nor see any virtual hands raised, so we will move on. Town administrator report. Greg.
Good evening. I am the town administrator, Greg Johnson. There's a couple of highlights from the town administration's report, and as always, I encourage the public to go to the town's website, click on, I think it's government, and then town administrative support are on the tab. And you can read this report and all the other reports I've been doing for the last couple of years. I am taking PTO, personal time off. I'm going on vacation from June 21st to June 24th. And that's the day after town offices will be closed on June 20th in observance of Juneteenth holiday. The HR manager, Stephanie Duggan, and myself and a number of team members from Town Hall are conducting interviews for the recruitment of a new town clerk. For those of you in the public who don't know, we don't have a town clerk, nor do we have an assistant town clerk right now. So I asked the public for their extreme patience with Town Hall as we tried to go through the recruitment process and hiring for new staff. We, I do have someone coming in Monday through Thursdays to pick up the phone. I also, we do have Pat Clifford, who has been appointed as the town clerk. She just happens to be on vacation. So she was already planning on taking in that vacation. She is retired from the town clerk's office in another town, so she's doing us a favor. She will return June 16th, and she will be here this weekend for town meeting. So I encourage the public and all registered voters to please attend town meeting, 9:00 AM at Fowler Middle School in the parking lot. It would be similar to how we've been doing it in the past, just this time at Fowler. And I think in regards to that, what, there's a topic on the agenda. And I think in regards to that, there's a topic on the agenda, but I very much look forward to town meeting, and the preparations are well underway. There's a lot on the TA report. I appreciate the departments submitting what they did. A lot of good pictures. A lot of great information from the Council on Nation, Library, Public Works, Fire Department. So please look at that. And, oh, but I do want to note, there was a question at a recent planning board meeting regarding the amount of restaurants versus fast food establishments at Maynard Crossing, 129 Parker commercial site. We do have a development agreement, and we reached out to our special counsel that we've been using for a long time, Attorney John Witten, to get his guidance and his advice regarding this question of how many restaurants and how many fast food establishments are permitted, in his interpretation of the development agreement. And I know this is kind of wonky, so for a lot of us, maybe you don't look at this, but, and what I'm referencing right now, by the way, is uploaded to board docs and has been provided to Planning Board and Select Board. In his interpretation, and I'm just gonna read this from his memo, the agreement, the development agreement, contain no maximum number of fast food restaurants, but limits to one, the number of fast food restaurants that may be constructed proximate to Parker Street. So it's a little tricky. He talks about how there has to be a special permit process and whatnot, but as far as fast food restaurants, other than the proximate, other than proximate to Parker Street, it's not limited within development agreement. I present that now to the select board in case you have any questions. This isn't, this is part of my TA report because it was requested to provide this to the public, in particular, the select board and the planning board. And I can't, I can't say what the planning board's response has been, the reaction to this. They may not have seen it yet because we may have gotten it before posted planning board. But does the board have any reaction to that? Do you have any questions? Anything you want to convey to me and Megan? We can give to the planning board?
Well, it's interesting that they interpreted fast food not to be a restaurant per se. That's basically the way I read it. They don't consider fast food a restaurant.
Right. Right. I think that's because it doesn't serve silverware. No, I think that's it. I think one of the
Is that right?
italic. Is that right, Megan?
You eat your fingers, okay.
Yeah, we have the zoning definitions in our bylaws, and so there is a difference between restaurant and fast food. And one of the things I think is, you know, having a at table service, silverware, that kind of thing. But obviously, fast food, you know, you eat there, so you can't eat there. So I see what you're saying. But yeah, there is a little bit of a definite, you know, two different definitions in our zoning.
Any questions for Greg on that topic or on anything else that's on the the Town Administration Report? Thank you, Greg.
Oh, thank you.
All right, we have item number five, the acceptance of minutes from May 17, 2022. Is there a motion?
I'll move to accept and approve the meeting minutes of May 17, 2022, as shown, and authorize use of digital signatures if approved.
Second.
Any comments or questions on the minutes as presented? If not, we'll vote. Chris?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
I am a yes as well. Item number six is appointments. There are quite a few reappointments based on just the end of the year coming up. I do want to comment on the fact, you know, sad to say that Jack McKeen will not be returning for a new term on the Historical Commission. Jack has been instrumental for our community in a number of ways over the years. As he begins to back away from various volunteer endeavors with the town, I think we owe him a debt of gratitude for all of the time and effort he's put into so many various things throughout the, throughout the years. But anyway, we have a number of these. We're not gonna read them all. We have a motion that has been approved that will encompass all of them to assure that those that are up for reappointment, and they've all been notified and accepted their reappointments. So this will allow us to expeditiously get them completed. So I will accept the motion or unless there are any comments or questions from anybody.
I'll move to reappoint board and committee members who have offered to be reappointed as provided, authorizing use of digital signatures if approved.
Second.
All right, any further comments or questions?
I just want to say, no, sorry. I just want to say that even though we're doing this expeditiously, we really do appreciate everybody who is willing to re-up and be appointed for another term. And, you know, our moving through it quickly doesn't mean that we don't care any less. We know that a lot of this could not get done without you, so we really appreciate what you do.
Well spoken. Thank you, Justine.
Well said.
So any further comments? If not, we'll take a vote. Chris?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. We do have an appointment to make, hopefully tonight. Sean Del Rose, who I see is online. Hi, Sean. Nice to see you. Nice to meet you.
Buddy, nice to meet you.
We're looking for an appointment to the Board of Assessors. So, welcome. Tell us a little bit about yourself. We did see as part of our package, we got your pre-appointment questionnaire and your resume. So tell us a little bit, and we'll ask any questions that we might have after that.
Yeah, I'll just go over some of the stuff that was in there. I just became the Assistant Assessor for the City of Watertown. I've been up here working with the assessor since last year. He's a great guy, showed me a lot of things. I've taken all my certification classes now online and in person. I moved to Maynard in 2020, right as the pandemic was getting into full swing, so I haven't seen any of you around town, I'm sure. But I live up on Deer Path and the condos up there. I love the town so far. Watertown used to be a lot like Maynard, very small, community-driven, very tight. Everyone knows each other, sees each other. How you doing in the street? Watertown's, as you know, getting a lot bigger and busier and a lot more in and out with young people buying condos. So it's nice to get out to my roots and have another town that's a little bit more similar to that, and I'm excited to get involved in the town planning and see where things are going.
Thank you. Thank you for stepping forward to volunteer. Are there any questions from the board?
Well, you couldn't have asked for a better qualified person, I guess, to apply.
I'm working on it, Armand. Thank you.
Sean, let me ask you, what would your thoughts be if, you know, being an assistant assessor yourself, if you were to find yourself in disagreement with the assessor on a, you know, a significant issue? How would you handle that? Would you voice your thoughts strongly as, you know, as, quite frankly, I think you should, but I thought I answered the question as I hope you do. But
He's leading the witness.
How would you, how would you find yourself, if you found yourself in that position, how would you address it?
Yeah, absolutely. I think that's the board's job is to kind of work through those, you can call them disagreements, you can call them just seeing it two different ways. I mean, there's a lot of things that go into these assessments, so there's, you know, a lot of gray area that can be, you know, seen two different ways. So what I would probably do is the same thing you do in most assessment situations. It's get as many comps as you can and stack up all the data you have. You know, I'll find 10 properties that fall into the same category as the one I see there and present that to the assessor and see where we go from there in one of our meetings.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions or comments? If none, we can take a motion.
I'll move to approve Sean M. Del Rose to the Board of Assessors for a term to expire June 30, 2024, authorizing use of digital signatures if approved.
Any further comments or questions? Hearing none. Chris?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
And I am a yes too. Congratulations, Sean. You're gonna have to go to the town clerk's office and try to find somebody to
I'll call ahead.
To have them, you know, sign you up for, so that you can be sworn in.
Perfect. And I hope you guys don't take it personally, but I do have to excuse myself. I'm still at work right now. But I will see you at the next meeting, probably.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Nice to meet you. See you around town at some point.
Yep, have a good evening.
Thank you all.
All right. Item number seven is correspondences. Is there a motion to accept the correspondences as presented?
Move to Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Move to accept and approve correspondences A through M as shown.
Second.
Any questions or comments on the correspondences as presented?
I had a quick question about the PEG grant report, Greg. I'm just trying to figure out, this is something that we can figure out offline too, but is there, so is there a number of what we have taken in from there as the grant? Is that the 796 that's at the bottom of the first page? It says PEG grant 796 or 797. Is that the money that we're getting?
That sound, that, I'm reading that the same way you are, but I want to, I'll verify that.
Okay, thanks. I meant to ask before the meeting, so we'll follow up later.
No, I appreciate that.
Anything else? Okay, hearing none, we'll vote to accept. Chris?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. Okay, item number eight is the consent agenda. We've got three items on the consent agenda tonight. The first is our annual Flag Day and Retirement Ceremony at Memorial Park, which is conducted by the Elks Lodge on June 13. Again, Memorial Park, there'll be a free summer concert scheduled for August 21st. Put it on your calendar. And the annual Read-A-Thon for the Maynard Public Library is on June 23, also at Memorial Park. And then yet another, and we say this all the time, how, how many Eagle Scouts we get here in Maynard for such a small community. It's amazing. Thomas Babayan is, has earned his Eagle Scout, and we offer our congratulations with a, with our presentation to him. Do we know if there's gonna be a ceremony for Thomas?
So, and that's actually what brought this about was, a couple of weeks ago, I was fortunate to attend the, I think it was the 40th anniversary of Troop One and Thirty, which combined to make Troop One Thirty, Boy Scouts of Maynard. They brought, they invited all of the Eagle Scouts to date, which was, you know, I think they ended up having, there were plenty of them. I think about 20 of them made it. Some of them are in their, you know, 50s and 50s that came. It was really great to see. But they hadn't had a chance because Thomas got his, his eagle during 2020. There was never anything done, and they weren't really sure what was gonna be done that night. So they actually presented that night, he actually got his eagle a few weeks ago. So I wanted to make sure that we honor him appropriately like we've done. So he is going to be at a scout meeting next Tuesday that I was planning on just giving it to him if that's okay with the board. But that's, so that's where that, that's come up.
Yeah, great. Congratulations to him. As I say, the number of kids that we have that are young men, I should say, that go on to become Eagle Scouts in Maynard is just incredible. And it's, it's been continuous. We're lucky. Okay, did we vote on the consent agenda?
No, we didn't make the motion either.
We will take a motion on the consent agenda.
Did we cover all of the items?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we went over all the items.
Okay, got it. All right. Sorry, I missed the summer concert. Very good.
He mentioned it, but he didn't say anything about like, who is it?
I don't know. Usually Mr. Mark's here to, to tell us all about, but Jane from
Oh, Jane's on.
Hi, everyone. Yeah, I just had a question related to, I'm also happy to answer any of your questions related to our requests. But for the summer concert on August 21st, we had indicated on the form, we were hoping to close down Summer Street just four, a couple of blocks from the intersection with Main Street to Nathan Street, which I guess has been done in past years. It's probably been a few years now with COVID and everything. So I don't know whether the select board needs to endorse that or if it's just the police, but maybe you can explain that.
Yeah, the board would need to endorse it as a public way being, being shut down. It's not part of our agenda item, but there's plenty of time for us to do it, so we can put it onto a a future agenda in order to do just that. And we want to make sure that, and I'm sure it's not gonna be a problem, but we want to make sure that the movie theater is aware and the, you know, their business is aware that it will be happening as well. So that there's no conflicts, that they don't have some special event scheduled for that particular night, et cetera, that might impact them. But I'm sure we're gonna be fine, but we will put it on another agenda and then send out, typically, we send out a notice to the police chief, the fire chief, DPW, and interested, other interested parties to make sure that nobody has any concerns.
Okay, all right. That sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you know what time you were thinking about shutting it down? Because I know the permit goes 12 to 8. So was it that whole time or was it just part of that?
No, just part of that time. I believe the concert starts at 1 o'clock. The actual concert starts at 1 and would go for a couple of hours.
Yeah, so to David's point, if it doesn't go into evening, that'll, you know, we shouldn't have a, you know, conflict with fine arts, I would think.
Other if it's, other than if it's a hot day and there's ice cream sales.
Yeah, that's, that's different. They'll have ice cream while they're listening to me.
They'll have people. Do you, Jane, do you know who the artist is?
Yes. The artist's name is, I think we don't have a signed contract yet with this person. But it's Tatiana Eva Marie, and she does kind of kind of cabaret style, gypsy style French music. She's Swiss, Swiss American. She lives in America. And she's really terrific. And she has a band.
Nice.
So she'll have a band with her.
Very nice. All right. Any other questions or comments? If not, we can vote on it.
Or we gotta make a motion.
Make the motion.
No, we didn't. Did we?
No, I don't think we did.
I'm off. My apologies. Please continue.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda items A through D as presented, contingent upon compliance with all federal, state, and local public health and safety guidelines, authorizing the use of digital signatures have approved.
Okay. All right, we'll vote. Chris?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. Item number nine, somewhat related, but unrelated, is the use of town property. Three different locations for three different events. This is good news when the town has so much going on that been, you know, we the first, and I will do these one at a time just because they're new events. The first one is the request for the use of Memorial Park in the mornings in July and August of 2022. Is there anybody here to speak to this issue?
Yes.
Hi, welcome. And your name is?
I'm Deveraux Geiger.
Hi, Deveraux. Nice to meet you. And are you a Maynard resident?
I am.
Okay, what, what is your address, just for the record?
Yeah, I'm at Six Hillside Street.
Okay, welcome. Tell us a little bit about your plan.
So I'm, my wife and I actually both, we run a music business here in town. She's actually away for the summer, and so this is just me this summer. We wanted to provide a way for the town to make some music over the summer. And we also just want to get to know the town a little better. We've been here since 2020. And so
That seems like a theme tonight.
I feel like everyone
Everybody moved in in 2020.
2020. So we, yeah, we just want to get to know what the town's interested in and just to get to know some people too. So I'm not looking to make a profit, but I was talking to Becky, who is very, very helpful. And what I had asked Becky is, is there a way for me to have a suggested donation to help cover the expenses of buying insurance for the buying insurance for the summer? Which I'll need in order to use the Memorial Park. So that was the reason I was asked, asked to come. At least that's the conversation I had with Becky. So I'm, I'm interested to know if that somehow is, is not kosher for using the Memorial Park? If, if you typically have people not asking for any money and how that works.
Well, we, the, the issue that I would ask, but before we get there, is whether we can approve if you don't have the insurance prior to our approval, if it's a requisite to have that for our approval or not. And that would be a question for the town administrator. If you do have, if you have it and you just want to get reimbursed, that's one thing. If you don't have it, that's another thing. Relative to the question that you have about fundraising for, you know, I, I don't think there's ever been any prohibition on somebody putting a hat out when they perform at, at Memorial Park or anywhere else to, to collect donations. So you know, you make the announcement as to why anybody wants, wishes to donate. That's just me speaking, not speaking on behalf of the board. That's just my, my observation. But Greg, what are your thoughts on approval without insurance permit?
Yeah, I wouldn't recommend it. And not, not because it's, I just, that's our blanket for our statement, like we just, but it's, and I, I'm often the bad guy in saying that, so I, I apologize, Deveraux, but it's just, it's just part of using the property. So in case there's any liability, someone gets hurt, like we just gotta make sure it's okay. And as, as David pointed out, town doesn't really have a policy when it comes to like fundraising for the, for whatever those purposes may be. So, yeah, you can maybe ask for it on the spot, but, but I, what the board could do is, is approve this
Contingent.
Contingent upon receipt of, in the Select Board Office, which Becky, of, of that insurance certificate, which, which meets our guidance that we got from our liability insurance, which is attached to the application. So I think that that would be my recommendation to the board. It's just, it's just amend the, amend the, the motion to make that contingency. But other, other volunteers find money through different organizations or individually or through GoFundMe pages, or you could approach Cultural Council. Cultural Council could be a good, good connection, because this is, that sounds like that's what this is, and, and they might be able to help you out.
Okay, wonderful.
All right, so if anyone on the board wants to, first off, there are any other questions, but beyond that, if there's a motion that we want to amend it, the proposed motion to include the requisite for insurance prior to the, to the approval becoming official.
Well, so, and, and I apologize, but so I didn't hear that, that Deveraux was not going to get the insurance. He was just looking to be able to collect money to offset the insurance. Is that correct, Deveraux?
That's correct, but I haven't yet bought the insurance because I wanted to know this, this information first.
Yeah, so then that would, that would answer the question. If you're gonna, if you have insurance, then yes, we can move ahead contingent upon Becky's receipt of verification of active insurance. And then to answer your second question, and again, I'm only speaking for myself and I, I certainly am open for the boards or the other board members' comments. I don't think there's a problem in seeking donations to help offset costs for insurance purposes, et cetera. And even on the spot, you know, donations at the time, as well as prior to, you know, advertising for a GoFundMe or whatever online.
Okay.
Any other comments on that point from the board? Do, I, everyone seem to agree?
No problem of mine.
Yeah.
Well, thank you.
So we can approve it and it's contingent upon verification of, of live insurance policy. And then move forward. Okay, great.
So we should make the motion with that amend. Is that what we're doing?
Yes.
Yeah. I could give it a shot. Move to approve the use of Memorial Park by Deveraux Geiger, interlude music and, oops, just missed it. On Saturday mornings or July 9, 16, 23, 30, and August 6, 13, and 20 of 2022, contingents upon compliance with all federal, state and local public health and safety guidelines. And that includes obtaining the insurance for that, for those days, authorizing use of the digital signature if approved.
I would ask one more comment. Deveraux, do you know the specific times?
Oh, yeah, good question.
9 to noon.
Okay, because that's, that's going, that's going the motion as well.
Yeah, okay. So you, you want me to change that motion?
Yes, please. We can amend it, applicable 9 to noon.
Yeah, just, that's all you just.
Just add that portion of it. And, yeah, so it'll be based on the hourly request of 9 to noon. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, okay. The motion's made and seconded. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. Chris?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. Thank you very much, Deveraux. It, it sounds exciting and hopefully it's a, it's a success for you.
No, I'll play the banjo for you if you want me to.
Great.
Or the tambourine, whatever you want.
How do you plan on advertising?
I, I was picturing banners and also just getting some things in Potentially Action Unlimited and other, other sorts of things like that.
All right, be sure if you're going to do banners on any public property, make sure you get our approval on that too. Okay. All right, great. Thank you. All right, the next thing is again, use of town property, this time for Naylor Court. A portion of green space behind Open Table for Open Table's use. Is there anybody here from Open Table to discuss this?
Um, David, I can put on my Open Table hat.
Please do.
Oh, okay. This is for their summer high school intern program, which they started last year. It was a big success. It's going again this year and they're just looking to set up like a little pop tent and have a little break area with some shade on that little green space during the weeks, except for July 4th week. And it will be taken down on the weekends, but I believe they will leave it up Monday through Friday.
And what is the purpose of the, just, what is the purpose of the use of the tent? What do they do with it?
It's just going to be for break times for the high school interns to have a place to go and be in the shade and, you know, sit down for a minute and have their luncheons, et cetera.
Okay. All right. Any questions from the board? If none, we'll can take a motion.
I'll move to approve the use of Naylor Court, a portion of green space behind Open Table from June 8th through September 1st, 2022. Contingent upon compliance with all federal, state and local public health and safety guidelines and authorized use of digital signatures if approved.
Second.
Any further comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. Chris?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. And the third item is the request to use of Crow Park parking lot on Saturday, June 11th. And my board docs' items just went down, so hold on one second. I gotta go in. Go back in, I should say. Don't know why that happened. All right. This is for Cub Scout Pack 130. Is there somebody here from Cub Scouts?
That would be me, Geraldine Peters Wells.
Hi, welcome.
Thank you. I'm here for Mark Cry and he's our Cub Master, but I'm.
That's okay. Tell us a little bit about what your plans are.
Um, so annually we do a donation drive where we have folks who can donate clothing and like small electronic things, you know, kind of household goods. You probably have seen it before. We usually do it in the Elks parking lot, but this year we kind of. So we want to use the back part of the parking lot at Crowfield, at Crowparking lot.
Do you do that twice a year?
We have done it twice a year, but I think we've only done it, we did it a year ago. Oh, yeah, actually, yeah, we maybe, we actually, we have done it in the past twice a year, yes.
I, I remember being there, but it doesn't seem like it was a year ago that I was there.
Um, it might have been six months ago. I'm trying to remember now. I was there for that one too, but honestly, time has become a little. Yeah, it's, it's one of our most successful fundraisers for that, the Scout Pack.
Okay, any questions from the board members?
The only concern I have is it conflicts with town meeting.
Yeah, we are aware it conflicts with town meeting. We had booked this before the town meeting date got moved, unfortunately, and we don't have another date. The, the organization doing the donation, running the donation for us, can't do another date.
Is, are you concerned at all about the, you know, because obviously the, the Elks had a lot more space. Are you concerned all about the traffic flow in the Crow parking lot at all or just vigilance?
Yeah, we're planning to put up good signage and designate one space, one way in, one way out. So we think, we think it'll actually work just fine. It is, there, you know, it does get, has some, it does have some busy moments, but I think we've managed it pretty well and I think we can continue to do so, just with like adults directing. We'll have to just direct people where to go. People, people want to be quick. They're like looking to get rid of their stuff.
There was discussion on the group that met to prepare for town meeting on Saturday about the fact that there were soccer games being played at the Fowler Field the day in the morning of, of, of town meeting. And I think the folks for the soccer are being instructed to park in the Green Meadow parking lot, but not the parking lot that you're talking about. Greg, is that, is that your recollection?
Yeah, same with town officials, so.
Town officials are being asked to park in the Green Meadow parking lot. And maybe you can encourage people when you take their stuff to go over to town meeting, because we need to make sure that we have a quorum for our meeting.
Point that will be like, you have to exit this way.
We can put a sign, we can put a sign up. Please, please go to town meeting.
We have, do we have anything else for Crow Park scheduled for that day as far as like baseball, anything like that? I was just thinking about that when you started talking about soccer having an issue. Just want to make sure that at least the Duke groups know that each other are going to be there.
Becky keeps a good, she keeps a calendar for Crow Park. Becky, I'm looking to you. Can you verify that it's, it's all good?
Yeah, I think most of the taught soccer, because that would be the first thing that's in the morning. It would have been the taught soccer and that has expired. And I haven't heard of any baseball games being jammed into that time slot.
Okay, thanks.
And your hours are 8 to 3 all day?
Yeah.
Okay. So it does go through town meeting time fully. Okay, any other thoughts from the board or is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the use of Crow Park by Cub Scout Pack 130 on June 11th, 2022. Contingent upon compliance with all federal, state and local public health and safety guidelines, authorizing use of digital signatures have approved.
Second.
Any further comments or questions? We'll vote. Chris?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. All right, thank you and good luck.
Great, thank you.
And please send people to town meeting.
We'll send them, we'll send them that way, right after they give us all of their old clothing.
I also, I also like that she said the adults are going to be directing traffic, not the Cub Scouts.
Oh, yeah. That would not work. This is, this is the pack. This is the younger kids. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. All right, item number 10, two items under the Maynard Cultural Council. First one is the Cultural District Renewal. And which we need to authorize a submission of a letter for intent for the renewal of our cultural district, district to the Massachusetts Cultural Council. I assume this is part of the cultural district requirements for the Commonwealth. Is that true? Jeff, do you have any insight on that?
Yeah, it's every five years we go up for renewal. So this is just the standard five year.
And it's nothing more than just standard saying, we like it, we want to continue having our own cultural district.
Well, and I'm sure Jenna can tell you more, but no, we, it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
So Jenna, welcome. Jenna's here too. Okay, I'm sorry. So please tell us a little bit about what we need to do and the purpose for it.
Certainly. Thanks for having Jenna and I, and I see DJs on as well. Yes, Greg and I have been in conversation. We need a letter of intent by June 17th for the renewal process. That sort of kicks it off. We have till October 28th of 2022 to complete the process. And what that entails is basically creating a cultural district map, asset mapping, taking an inventory of new assets. You know, as the Fine Art Festival has a new owner, just getting in touch with all the cultural partners. We've already had three of these large meetings. Armand has been amazingly supportive and has worked with me and the council and in some of these meetings. Megan has showed up, so we've really kicked it off. Basically, we're all getting to know each other again. And some of the big issues that have arisen already in these, these meetings have been issues of governance and how to manage the cultural district going forward, as well as fundraising. It having some kind of budget. And basically creating more community engagement around the, the cultural district. So it's off to a great start. We have had a couple of public speaking series during the cultural council. We had Jason Weeks, who I'm sure a lot of you know from Maynard. He was wonderful. He's a, he's, he's no short of wisdom on how to run a cultural district, that's for sure. And, and then we had Athena Pandol from Natick Center. And I just got a confirmation today for the 23rd of this month. Luis Cancel will be our guest speaker. And he has been, I've known him from San Francisco. He's for the Arts SF Commission. Head of the San Francisco Arts Commission there, as well as Cultural Affairs for New York City. And he's agreed to come and zoom in and talk to us. So it's been really inspirational to have these speakers come and talk and, and just figure out the best practices for starting this. So otherwise, it's been really fun to organize this and there's so much enthusiasm and involvement from the, the board and from OMS and from the community.
Well, that's good to hear. You're getting the support that you need. It's very important to us. You know, we were so excited when we got the cultural, the designation back, I guess it was five years ago. It just seems longer than that. But great, and, and you know, earlier in the evening, Deveraux was speaking about, you know, an initiative he has. Hopefully you guys can sort of get together and, and speak and see if there's any way that the cultural council can work with Deveraux on not only his project, but perhaps even incorporating some of his ideas into.
Yes, he's been at a couple of the, the cultural council meetings and, and in our, our cultural district meetings too. Wonderful person to have here in Maynard. And I moved at the end of 2019. So it feels like, you know, and everything shut down in 2020 and now we're all coming out of the woodwork.
Yes. All right, any questions from the board members on this, on our requirements or our, yeah, our requirements? And what we're being asked to do? If not, we can take a motion.
I'll move to authorize submission of the letter of intent for the renewal of the Maynard Cultural District to the Massachusetts Cultural Council.
Second.
Any further comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. Chris?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. Good luck. Thank you.
Great, thanks.
And we look forward to another five years of success.
Me too.
All right.
Thank you.
And the next item is, uh, also at the cultural council seeking to establish a gift fund. So can you speak to that too, Zanna?
No, I'll let Jenna.
I think Jenna.
She's our treasurer.
Okay, Jenna, thank you.
Um, so we are requesting that a gift fund be established, um, to support festivals in town. Um, the initial festival, um, that it will help with is the upcoming Jazz Fest, which is less than a month away. Um, and so this will allow, um, as Anna was talking about, part of what we are focusing on is, um, creating methods, um, to support the cultural activities. And so we're hoping to do a, create more of a focus on festivals. Um, so this will help support, um, the growth of festivals in town and, um, allow for a collection of donations going forward.
Uh, we used to have a sort of a, I wouldn't call it a gift fund, but we had a downtown enhancement funds. We had downtown, um, improvement funds. Uh, Greg, where would you propose that any type of gift fund? Uh, would be developed from? We've done it before where we've taken, uh, some of the money from, uh, from parking fees and et cetera. But, uh, you know.
We can look at that, but this, this is just to establish a, a method for when donations are received. So then we're going to function a little bit like their bank. So like they're, they're gonna, they're gonna, we've done this before, but I don't remember the other. We, we, there's another instance, and I don't recall what it is, where we have a gift fund set up and then.
Perhaps a cess, cessment.
Yeah, that might have been it.
The 150th.
That might have been. Or hometown heroes.
Or hometown heroes might have done the same thing.
So in order to make sure like on the up and up, when we get checks and it goes to a certain account and then.
Got it. Okay, so we're not looking for the town to fund this. It's for a receptacle for where the money goes when they get then, uh, donations or whatever.
Yeah.
Got it. Okay.
If I remember correctly, donations to, under Mass state law, to either cultural councils or districts through this mechanism are tax deductible, which allows you to collect tax deductible gifts without setting up, uh, uh, um, a nonprofit organization or, uh, then obviously that wouldn't apply for other town type of funds.
That might be right. I'm not familiar with law, but that, that might be right.
Uh, you might want to do a double check just to make sure in case there's a, a tweak in the way the fund is set up, just to make sure. But I'm pretty sure from when I was running the district, that was as part of it, if you could set up, um, donations to either the district or the council were tax deductible, um, which was unique for these types of organizations.
That's cool. Which would be, I think, uh, encouraging others to donate maybe from, from that standpoint. Yep.
Hey, any other comments, questions? So is there a motion?
I will move, I'll make a motion pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, to establish a gift fund through the Maynard Cultural Council to allow for donations to support festivals within the town of Maynard.
Second. I was to Chris, he was loudest.
Yes.
Always.
All right, so any further comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. Chris?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. Good luck with that.
Thanks.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 11 is contracts. These are not the contracts we were speaking about earlier this evening, um, but rather contracts with some of our vendors. Uh, specifically, uh, our auditing services, Roselli, Clark and Associates, who we had the pleasure of meeting with, what, two meetings ago, was it? Or was it last, was it last meeting?
It was two.
No, two meetings ago.
Two weeks ago, yeah.
Because he was live.
Yes, right.
He was, that's right.
That's right.
Right, which reminds me, we'll have to add that as a topic again.
Now it's, now it's Memorex.
Yeah. So anyway, Greg, go ahead and comment.
Yeah, so, um, we've been using Roselli, Clark and Associates Certified Public Accountants for a number of years. You know, since I've been with the town for three, four years. And, uh, there are auditing services, so they do the regular audits and they also sometimes do special audits. So, uh, for example, they do a single audit, which is a review of all our federal, um, funds that we've received. Uh, they also provide, uh, an audit service, not also, but in, included in the town's, um, auditing, it also includes the schools. So as the schools, uh, you know, as they're, they're operating in general funds and whatnot, they do an audit service for us. So, um, I have a lot of confidence. I think, I think we've had a good relationship with, uh, Roselli, Clark and Associates as, as more often than not represented by Torrenzio. Um, and his team, when they come to town hall, I think they've been cooperative. We've been cooperative with them and I think it's a good, good relationship. So I, I recommend, um, uh, another three-year deal. And, and we had, we have budgeted their proposed increase, which isn't, you know, like which is acceptable, their, their, their proposed increase. Um, and we have budgeted for that in the proposed general fund article for Saturday's town meeting.
Any questions from the board? Hearing none, we'll take a motion.
Uh, move to approve the agreement with Roselli, Clark and Associates Certified Public Accountants for auditing services on the 30th, 2024, and authorizing the use of digital signatures if approved.
Second.
Any further comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. Armand?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. House Doctor for Design Services, Greg, why don't you take this one?
Yeah, this one is an interesting one. Um, so as your chief procurement officer for the town, I am responsible for making sure that, that we abide by all the laws and regulations relative procurement. This, this came up, uh, I don't know how long ago, but it was, it was new to me and new to a lot of us, um, in this sort of procurement world, which is the concept of a house doctor, which is a strange name. But if you, if you go to, uh, if you go to the inspector general's office for the state and they, they issue guidances, uh, which is, uh, which is a tab at the top of my, of my homepage, um, because I check those pretty often. You'll see that it has, um, a guide for designing, for design services. So I'm, I'm talking like buildings, construction, um, improvements and whatnot. Uh, so this is a relatively new chapter, this concept of a house doctor. So you can have a number of firms, design firms, that you can choose from after they've gone through the procurement processing. You've awarded, uh, this, like, these agreements with these firms, um, that you could select according to their qualifications for whatever the project may be. So we, we are, we always have something in the works or a project either underway or planned for that may, that may need a design services. But this is not to say that we would use a, one of these house doctor firms for something like the Green Meadow project, right? That's a, that's a completely different beast. It's a massive, massive process. This is something I think that we would be looking for. Um, if town meeting approves the transfer of funds from the, from the golf course, that we can do improvements to envelope, uh, the envelope improvements to the golf course, this is something they could help us out with. Or if there's, or if there's some sort of like minor changes or improvements to buildings, um, yeah, they just, that's what they could help us do. So if there's renovations to a room or, or whatnot, they, they can, they could do that. So, uh, we put out the RFP, I got three responses back. Um, this is the first of those, I hope, I hope to have the contracts with all three, just for the, that's the point. Like you want to have, you want to have sort of like a, a list to go to. Um, and this is Habib and Associates Architects. They just happen to be the first contract that we finalized negotiations with, uh, working with town council and, and in this firm. Um, so there's no cost to this particular contract, because the cost will come out of whatever the project may be. And then you apply that firm's rates to whatever the services may be for whatever that project is, if you choose them for that project. So it's a lot of, it's a lot of what ifs. Um, but it, it saves us a little bit of time. Um, if and, if and when the time comes, we need a design firm, we don't have to do a separate procurement. We can just pick one of these three. Hopefully, I, I hope to have the other two soon.
Who has the authority to choose the one that we choose for a particular project? Is it you or is it the board or is it depending on the size of the project?
That's a good question. So if the contract is going to be over 50,000, then I have to have the board. But if it's less than 50,000, then, then I have authorization to approve contracts. So I think that's probably how it would go, but it wouldn't, like, I, I, I don't necessarily have an eye for that stuff, right? So of course, like those projects more often than not fall into public works. So Justin, who's familiar with, if most, if not all of these firms. Uh, and by the way, of course, like their, their robust, um, submissions for their, to the RFP shows their forties and experiences and expertise and what they have and pictures of the renovations they've done. So we, we have a good sense of, of the sort of like quality of work they do and what projects we may think of them for. Um, and that's, that's how we'll select.
Okay. So it's dependent on the contract that we would have with them for the particular project, not the project itself?
No, it is the project itself. So let's say if, if Habib happens to be really good at roofs, then, then they will use Habib for the, whatever roof project we may have.
But the approval of that contract, uh, the approval of the selection would go to you, dependent on
Oh, yeah.
the amount of the project or the amount of the contract with Habib in this instance.
The amount of the contract. Because the, because if it's two different contracts, then it's going to be two different stupid optimizations. But the, um, yeah, but that's, that's why, because not knowing how much that, that contract may be eventually. And, and regardless, I like the idea of the transparency of having like, you know, going to the select board when I can to have, to kind of like make it known that, yeah, we do, we are using house doctor services. Um, in case there's a question, like, how'd you procure those? Well, we, we did the RFP. I have a house doctor contract.
And under the current processes, we would be doing that in-house. We were doing that work in-house.
Maybe, but in all likelihood, I don't have design firm. So we, in all likelihood, this would be something we would have to separately procure when the time came. This just saves us a little bit of time.
All right, I get it.
Yeah.
Have we needed a similar service recently?
No, because we've just been kind of doing piecemeal. We're just taking advantage of that this, that it's mostly because we can do this now. So when, when this, when the procurement guides allow municipalities to do this, I, I, I'd be willing to bet like bigger cities or like DCAM, which is a state level, they usually have like a list, but, but towns, not that I'm familiar with, have done this before. So I, I just saw it in the, in the procurement guide and I thought like that would be a great idea. So our, our town council helped us draft, um, the requests for proposals.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? If none, let's make a motion. If somebody wants to.
Uh, I will move to approve the house doctor contract for design services with Habib and Associate Architects for a term to expire June 7th, 2025, and authorize the use of digital signatures if approved.
Second.
Any further comments? Hearing none, we'll vote. Armand?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. All right.
Thank you.
Next topic is the marijuana community impact fee. Uh, Greg, do you want to take this?
No, I don't want to take Chris under, bounce pass it.
Megan?
Thank you.
Just make sure it's not, just make sure it's not a stolen pass like the Celtics in the third quarter.
Oh.
Go ahead, Megan.
I would never. Um, well, thank you. I wanted to provide an update. I had received some requests, um, for information about the community impact fees that the town has received from the two retailers that are located in downtown Maynard. So I, I have a memo on board docs, um, that I can kind of go through right now and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Right ahead.
So we have two host community agreements, um, that have active retail operations in Maynard. That is, uh, Wellspring, Mass Wellspring and Green Thumb Industries, which when it was first established was Green Star Herbal. And so we have received the 2021 community impact payments. That is not for 12 months, um, because they both opened towards the end of March in 2021, but it's close to a full year. Um, so in total, we have received 160,696 dollars and 13 cents from both retailers. Um, we did have, um, close to $21,000 from Green Star Herbal, um, contributed early, basically, you know, our, our host community agreement says they have to be paid 90 days after the close of the calendar year. But they paid their first quarter, um, when it was Green Star Herbal. And so we didn't realize that we were going to get a check, but we got a check for close to $21,000. And so when we received that, we didn't have the stabilization fund set up because we need town meeting to do that. So, um, at Fall Town Meeting, we both established a, um, special revenue stabilization account that is allowed for this specific use. And then we also appropriated that $21,000, um, to a marijuana community impact, you know, line item in the, in the town budget. So typically, the way it will work is, you know, the funds come in and then they're deposited into the stabilization account. And then town meeting will vote to appropriate the funds. Um, but like I said, this one, we had town meeting vote to, you know, put it in this line item budget, this $21,000. So what we have spent so far, um, out of this $21,000, you'll notice 10 new, maybe, uh, you'll notice flower buckets that the community gardeners have been working on. They look incredible, um, right now. They have new little signs. And they've been working really hard. Um, they have kind of new, like all sorts of volunteers that have been helping with that. So, um, we wanted to, you know, they wear out after time, so we, we purchased some new ones. Um, we are also going to be replacing eight benches downtown, which is very exciting, all in front of Boston Bean. And throughout that sidewalk, those are the old teak wooden benches that are kind of rotting. So they'll be replaced with the black standard benches. Um, and so the order's in for those and they, they should be in, I think, later this summer. And so that leaves, um, about 10,000 more dollars. And this, this one's a little up in the air. Um, I had applied for a shared street grant this year for a number of things, for nail or court revitalization. And I was hoping to get some funds from the state to do a dumpster corral. We've been talking about this for a number of years, to put the dumpsters in one area, fence it and screen it so that, you know, our nail or court can be used for performance-based outdoor dining and not be, have dumpsters looming. I don't know if I can pull it off for $10,000. I asked for a lot more in this grant and I only have, um, about a month. So I'm going to try to do that, uh, with the help of DPW. But if not, the funds will likely go to tree pruning for downtown, which is also desperately needed. And the funds are not there to do, you know, additional tree pruning. So, you know, this is a little bit of an anomaly, the way this, these funds are being spent, but typically they'll be appropriated through town meeting. Um, and I did outline, I mean, these were appropriated through town meeting, but like the projects were not specifically outlined. And I did outline a few things that we're hoping to do. Um, this is kind of the beginning of the discussion of what this $139,000 can get for the community. And, you know, I know we've had discussions recently about some confusion regarding traffic signage downtown and, um, people taking the wrong turns. And this is really a result of a number of years of piecemeal traffic signs downtown. So the Parking Authority and Department of Public Works and our town engineer have worked on a comprehensive signage plan so that we can, um, you know, potentially remove all of the confusing signage and put up a consistent, you know, clean and, um, you know, easy to understand signage plan downtown. Um, so that's one of the things that, that we're thinking about, um, putting together for a potential town meeting article in the fall. But I'm happy to answer any questions.
Everybody got any questions?
No.
Um, uh, somewhat related, but not directly related to the allocations that are here and the specifics. There was recent, um, I believe legislative action that will change the whole issue with the community impact fee. And if you're not prepared this evening to talk about it, please just say that you're not prepared to speak about it. And if you're not prepared this evening to talk about it, please just say that you're not prepared to speak about it. Um, but man, maybe we should, we could add it to, uh, a future agenda, just so that everybody's on the same page as to. How this impacts us and how, how we should be thinking about not only our current. Uh, community impact fees, but as we move forward with any future community host agreements and how that will affect. Our process going forward. So I don't know what your thoughts are, Greg or Megan, on that topic. Um, or if you'd rather wait and sort of have a presentation on it down the road.
Yeah, I think this is still developing, you know, so I think it would make sense to have another conversation about it. We are speaking with, you know, town council. About it, um, and I think the bottom line is. It's hard to know what is going to happen in the future with these agreements. And. So we just need to be, you know, ta- take what we, you know, we have an agreement. You know, we've been working with them, our, with Senator Eldridge and his staff and explained our position and he was in full support of. You know, the, the bills that were passed could have been a lot worse. I mean, they could have gone back to amend. Existing agreements with communities and, and companies, which is just completely taking away the power. And of, of, you know, the select board, they're in their executive authority here. So. It didn't get to that point. What it will mean for new agreements, you know, as, as everyone knows, you know, we are currently negotiating and working on. And a host community agreement with UPA. And so I sent, you know, was working on that draft with our council today and it's. You know, the same kind of language. So I, yeah, I'm happy to kind of come back, David, with more information. Take your time, but it's, it's something we're working on. We don't know what the future will hold, but. Right now, we have a hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
In many ways, it's, you know, it's. Uh, I don't want to call it bait and switch, but it, in many ways, it could be considered a bait and switch for some communities whose sole purpose. In approving, and I'm not saying this was the case in Maynard, but for approving marijuana sales in certain instances. Was for promised tax revenue that now has been reduced. Now, we always knew that the community impact fee was going to be limited to a specific amount of time anyway. But now that they've taken that away, um, it, you know. And then I, I actually was listening to the radio, um, probably a couple of weeks ago. And I believe it was the mayor of Worcester, um, I'm trying to remember who specifically was, um, speaking about this. And he was speaking it as if. They were gone, like community impact, um, you know. The whole community host agreement issues were gone. It was not going to be something, you know, so I'm figuring, oh, he must have some insight with the legislature. That this is going away. Um, and as I say, it seems to me to be somewhat of a bait and switch where. Oh yeah, you can get all this revenue for your community and then suddenly, wait a minute, no, you can't. Um, and some communities may feel slighted by that. So, yeah, I would like to have that conversation, assuming the board would too, and just, and it helps us, I think, planning for our future as well. As we, so we have an understanding of, uh. Of what our rights are as we move forward and what we can and can't ask for and what we can, cannot expect.
I, I feel very fortunate that our attorneys throughout these whole processes have been very conservative. So I feel like, um, they are very measured with, you know, from day one, they have been very measured. With what we should ask for, you know, regardless of what other towns do. Um, so, so I'm very happy that, you know, we have their guidance moving forward with this one as well.
Yeah, but unfortunately, on a state level, all the towns and cities have taken advantage and that's why we are where we are today in this situation. And, and to David's point, I heard the same thing, that it's probably gonna go away. Um, but you know, what it like Megan's point, we have a hundred and sixty thousand now, so. Uh, let's work with what we have and, and, uh, be able to apply that to. Doing exactly what we should be doing as opposed to what other towns are doing, so.
We do have that discussion. It may, may make sense to wait until we have more definitive. Discussion about, um, uh, onsite consumption, uh, which.
Which is coming.
If, if it comes, we'll need to have, uh. A deep dive, a, a close look at that and understand we want to react to whatever the legislation is. But again, probably, probably jumping the gun to have that conversation now. Until we learn more details about what it looks like and what the local options could potentially be.
I, I tend to agree that we probably need, we need to wait for more information on a global scale. Uh, more issues than just this one issue. Alright.
Thanks.
Thank you, Megan, for the update.
Thank you, Megan.
The next item is item thirteen, the town hall HVAC issue. Greg, do you want to take that?
Yeah, it's getting stuffy, uh, in the second.
Are you talking air conditioning or are you, you know?
It's my own hot air. So, um, uh, I'm a dad. So. I, I, it's, it's, it just needs to be replaced, unfortunately. So, um, it's, it's, the downstairs is fine. Um, it's, it's kind of subterranean anyways, but, uh, the upstairs, the hot air rises or whatever the case may be. Um, I don't know how old our current system is, uh, but we do have a quote, the, the hard work of Kyle Brainerd, who is our assistant facilities director. Um, has taken it on and, and I saw him go up on the ladder with the guy and they were looking around, figuring it out and the quote that we got was. Uh, a little short of ten grand. Um, and we didn't know the HVAC was going to break, so that's why the reserve fund comes in, because we didn't budget for it. So. Um, I'm looking for approval from the board so that we can submit it to the finance committee. I've already notified. Um, the finance committee through Alana, uh, to see if we get on their, their soonest agenda, so that we can get those funds and. Fix it.
It's actually pretty reasonable cost if it's, uh, if it's a total floor of a municipal building to have HVAC.
Yeah, I, I almost paid that for my house.
That's the thing. So, uh, and as always, when we talk about these reserve fund transfers, we don't have any authority to say no anyway. It's just, uh, we are giving our knowledge to the finance committee that we have seen it and are passing it along to them. It's not an approval of anything, but that's not our, our role with reserve fund transfers.
So I will move to approve the reserve fund transfer request for the repairs to town hall HVAC system in the amount of ninety-eight seventy. Uh, and forward to the finance committee, uh, authorize the use of digital signatures if approved.
That goes to Armand, because Chris got the last.
Yeah.
Uh, okay, any further comments? Hearing none, we'll vote Chris.
Yes.
Justine.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Armand.
Yes.
And I M E S as well. Alright, town meeting. Um, I'll preface this with, um, we had another meeting of the, the. I guess the players, if you want to call that, that are, that are involved in the, uh, prep, preparation of town meeting that I sat in on. Jeff was there. Um, Greg was there. Uh, Megan, were you at that meeting?
No, she was at a conference.
No, okay, so Megan wasn't there. Alana was there. Um, and the moderator sort of gave his background. We answered questions, uh, gave the, the preparation as to. Or our thoughts as to how things should move. Um, but Greg, what do you have to add on, uh?
Yep. So we, we touched on it a little earlier. I, I kind of want to use this opportunity to go over a little bit of the scheme that's changed. Uh, just so people have an expectation of what, when they arrive. So it is at the Fowler School. Uh, when you go in, we'll have a police officer detail kind of directing traffic a little bit, and I guess that also sort of helped to get the Cub Scouts where they gotta go. Um, if you are gonna pull up and, and park, which is, you know, the expectation that most of the voters will. And, and town officials for that matter, uh, you'll park and, and the police will escort you. You will have the Boy Scouts there too and, and you'll be, you'll be parked up. Um, instead of facing the, the actual entrance to the middle school, the, the main stage, if you will, will be. Um, abutting the, the, the playground and the, and the soccer fields. Um, and I've been in touch with Drew Holmes, uh, who's president of the Maynard Youth Soccer to try to de-conflict. And he says it'll be fine, like they're, they're gonna try to shift away, uh, but it, but if need be, they'll park at the Green Meadow Elementary School. So if you're a walk-up. Um, or let's say you jive and then want to walk, that's fine, but park at the Green Meadow Elementary School. I'll, I'll be parking there too. And, and walking up to, um, to the, to the area. Uh, tents was an issue, so, um, we, you know, we like to put the, the election workers for, for the registration on a tent and the town has a number of pop-up tents. Uh, but because we couldn't secure, it's just busy, it's just that time of year. So we couldn't secure like the big tents that we'd had at the, at the Mill Parking Lot. So we're just shifting the registration from, you know, basically, we're gonna put the election workers underneath that, that, that. Overhead, um, you know, entryway into the Fowler School, there's some overhead clearance, but I don't know what you'd call it, but. A little bit of roof there. So we'll put the election workers under there. So as people pull up, it'll be just kind of like pick up and drop off of kids. And you'll, you'll do your registration, then you park. Uh, but it'll be limited space up towards the front. So the expectation is not that. All board members, all town officials, et cetera, et cetera, are, are sort of like hanging out at the front. It's, it's gonna be like if you're speaking, if you're, if you're, or if you're, if you're a walk-up voter, you can, you can go up there too. Um, but it's gonna be kind of limited space, so, uh, don't expect like the big tents and, and all that. Um, the meeting does start at nine AM, so, uh, setup is gonna be early. Um, uh, but you know, we've secured the AV company. Um, it's not the same companies before, but it's their sort of partner and they'll, and they'll be sending it up on time. Um, same thing as the past, we'll do the radio broadcast. Uh, the, in, in, in order to expedite the, the process itself, the recent, um, you know, like the show. Um. David Gavin will be as the chair of the select board, will be reading the motions. This is, I think we've, this is just how we've done it the last couple of times. So, um, he'll read the motions. With the exception of citizens petitions, so the citizens petitions read their own motions, but David will do, read the motions and then the majority, of course, are select board. Uh, sponsored, but, um. Oh, Bill Coleman will represent the, um. And then, um, but otherwise it'll be David and then you, either myself or another department can be subject matter expert. Uh, we will be packing all the bags, the swag bags, I call it, for, for all the voters, um, tomorrow or the next day. Um, and there's a lot, there's a lot of materials, right? So it's the, the warrant and motions and, and I'm sorry, the instructing page and, and these presentations. So I did have the presentation, um, for just the general sort of overview, which is a reflection of the warrant. Uh, but we also have the presentations from, um. The citizen petitioners, so, which I've included to board docs just for the board's awareness. Uh, the school's also printed off their budget presentations, um. Which is fine. So I was just gonna incorporate it into the slide deck that gets printed off, but they've already done it, so it would be separate. Uh, and then also the Green Meadow School Building Committee wanted, uh, the tri-fold plantlets, so those are, those are printed as well. So it's a lot, a lot going in the bag. Plus you'll get your little color code card so you can, and, you know, whatever. So that's all gonna be in the bags.
Um. Is the, um, so is the clarification regarding the free cash, is that going in the bag?
Yep, that's in there too. It's front and back, because one side is the free cash and the other side is the select board's statement.
Well, everybody getting free cash, huh? That's pretty good.
And also the additional information from FinCom.
And FinCom.
That's gotta be a big bag.
Becky can't even look out like her window. This is just stacks of papers.
Um.
Uh, so I'm presuming the restaurants are gonna be from Fowler, not Pollo Parties? Okay.
That's right.
And Becky, um, if you can just get me the list, bring them on Saturday, the list of the names. Because early in the meeting, we're gonna be, we're not going to be bringing the recipients of the awards up. The moderator wanted to expedite. Um, so instead, the names of the, the honorees will be read out at the meeting. Um, including all the members of the, uh, committee that we have, uh, that we have recognized. Um, and we will recognize the award winners, the, um. The employee of the year type thing, if you have any other real name for it, at a future selectments meeting. Where we can, uh, have them present to give them there as well as the volunteer awards. But I do need the names because I am going to be reading them out. So Becky, if you can have those for me on some form on Saturday morning, that'd be helpful. Uh, also, the, uh, the statement that we're going to, uh, read is, uh, that the board is going to present. Um, I, I want to make sure we have that, either one on, uh, okay, as part of the, part, sort of part of the package. Um. Going for, you know, sort of, so all of the motions, all of the stuff and those statements there too.
Yeah, we, I created, in working with Dick, we created the script. So when you go up there, you'll have the binder and then.
Yeah, he forwarded to me, uh, his comments, uh, so that I would know when he, when he expects me to pipe in.
Okay.
Um, but I wanted to make sure that the statement the board has approved is in the package. So that it's not among the missing.
Okay, good.
So we can make our statement.
Greg, and I don't want to bring any bad luck, but to what extent do we think we can hold this in rain?
Yeah, that's what I was just gonna say.
And is there any planning we can do that might allow us to hold it in at least a light rain, um, so that.
I think we can.
What's that?
I think we can. So, and I think Dick has said the same, if I recall. So he's, he's, uh, if it's lightning, can't do that, but if it's, but. The, the expectation is that people are in their cars. So, um, which is fine. And then you turn your radio to whatever and then Boy Scouts are tough. They can wear their ponchos. So we'll, um, everyone will be kind of covered and then, and then we'll have the remaining tents up, up towards the front, you know, so. We should be, we should be all set. I don't mind a little rain.
Well, the only, the only thing is gonna be walking from, you know, Green Meadow.
Yeah, they have, they have umbrellas.
In the front, right.
Okay.
The, uh, the weather that I've seen doesn't show rain for Saturday morning, but rather Saturday evening, so.
Guys are talking about it too much now. Don't.
I, my, my comment is if there's any precautions we can take, I know we got, you know, the microphones and things like that, just to allow us to be a bit more rain tolerant than.
I'll double check. I think it's a great, I mean, this, it's, it's meant to be outdoors, so I'll, but I'll double check that.
Alright, thank you.
Just so that, um, you know, we know, uh, I am booked Sunday morning with a graduation issue, so. Um, if it does get rained out, Jeff, I would ask that you be prepared to, uh, play the role. Uh, just sitting up there and doing this.
So good question. How did, how did, how does it work if it gets rained out and how do we make announcements?
Sunday morning is the, uh.
But how do you make the announcement? How does that?
The town moderator can shift it.
Okay.
Uh, yeah.
But we're hoping that it doesn't happen and, uh.
Yeah. Maybe we could do like, or we could do the reverse nine-one-one that night, like we'll, we'll do whatever we can. Yeah.
Speaking of that, is there gonna be a reverse nine-one-one going out anyways, just because I, I feel like I haven't heard. I mean, I haven't been on a lot of social media lately, but I have not heard a lot at all about this town meeting. So I just want to make sure that people are planning on attending.
Uh, I believe there is, and if, and if Stephanie is listening, she can verify that.
She's on.
She's the voice of Maynard.
I'll post on Facebook tomorrow. You're right, Justine. I, I have a meaning to do that.
And there was a request from the moderator at the meeting on Friday that, um, that a, an announcement go out. I think he wanted it to go out. Friday.
I don't know, Stephanie, what's your, what's your understanding?
It's actually scheduled to go out tomorrow night because we have a DPW's thing that we are lobbing on there. So. Yeah, it's scheduled for tomorrow night.
And you have to rehearse, of course, so.
No, no, it's done. It's pre-recorded. I just wanted to make sure, right, yeah.
Cool, thank you, Steph.
All set, sure.
Alright, anything else? So we're all supposed to park at Green Meadow. Or are the board members that aren't, um, speaking? Can they just come in and park like we did the last time up front?
Yeah, I mean, so that, my worry is that there won't be enough tent space because we're not using the big tent space. We're using like multiple of the smaller. So if, if, um. I mean, that's, I, I hate to ask you guys to walk though, so like, or park if you.
We're perfectly capable.
So Lana, what have you asked your team to do?
Uh, well, at the meeting, I asked the moderator that exact question. I said, uh, you know, in the past. We've said we're members of FinCom and the police have directed us to park right in the front. And the moderator said that he was concerned there would not be enough parking, that it's gonna be really tight. And if people were willing, that he would rather us park at Green Meadow and walk over.
Alright, so that means all of us go and get under the tent, because Greg's saying it's not enough to go under the tent.
Or we could just not sit, you know.
Are we not setting up the space under the awning as well?
Yeah, but that's, that's off to the side. So the, so if you. I mean, you can stand there, but you won't be able to really see as well because the awnings, the entryway to the Fowler School is too far away and it's kind of a weird angle if I, if I'm trying to remember. But if, um. Yeah, so I mean, look, look, if it was Greg. Yeah, so I mean, look, look, if it was Greg Johnson and I didn't plan on speaking anything about, if I was just showing up, if I was a member of of even the select board, I would just drive. Because if you, if you're not planning on speaking and there's, and hopefully there's no need for a quorum with the board. Then, then. And we're, we've already talked about the the R word too many times tonight. So taking, taking your car might be the best bet.
All right. And Greg, I'll stop by. Well, you'll bring me the paperwork on Saturday morning, right?
Yeah, Becky's on top.
Okay, all right. I'm going to be stopping in tomorrow anyway. Becky, you didn't hear that earlier to sign a document that was left in your office. Are you in?
Yeah, I can authorize it.
Yeah, okay. All right. That's it. Next item, item number fifteen. Does anybody have any other questions on town meeting?
Is it going to rain? No, I'm only kidding.
It's now Armin's fault. You all heard it.
Item number fifteen is the select board policies updating Maynard's flag raising policy. What was it, two years ago that we created an initial policy on flag raising? So why don't you, Greg, tell us a little bit about how this has been, there's a red line in in our, in our list, but for the, for the viewing and listening public. Let us know what's what's been updated.
So I think it was about two years ago, we had been requested from. No, it was the Indian.
Independence.
Dependence, yes. Yes. So, which is fine, but we didn't have a policy. So I reached out to the to town council. And they and they gave what a policy just to sort of make sure, you know, it was, it wasn't considered. Of any violation of free speech or government speech or otherwise. But and so now we have a policy. The town council, though, has let us know that due to recent Supreme Court decision, that is actually a reflection of the city of Boston. A denial of a certain, I mean, you can read this in the in the guidance, in the memo that they gave, but there was a denial of a certain request to the city of Boston. And that was gone through the circus court system and eventually went to the Supreme Court. So the town council is recommending that we, that we update. And they provide the red line version to update our policy, which is really just to say that it's, it's not really free speech. It's not really government speech is is like, government is not really taking a stance as represented by whatever happens to be hoisted by the flag. So it's. I, it's, this is a super rare occurrence. I think in the last two years, it's been the one hundred and fiftieth in the Indian. Yes, so I, so Indian independence recognition flag, whichever it was. So this doesn't really come up, but town council just sort of tries to keep us at rest.
And it's it's relatively minor change. And that went to the United States Supreme Court, not the. The Supreme Judicial Court of the Commonwealth. That was a US Supreme Court judge decision.
Yeah.
The the only amendment is under item four. The language now says the town does not, nor has it ever intended, the flag pole. Serve as a forum for free expression by the public. By permitting a third party to raise a particular flag on the same. Accordingly, neither this policy, the town's choice of which flag to raise, nor the manner in which it makes such choice. Should be interpreted as designating the flag pole as a public forum. To the contrary, any flag raised on the flag pole is an expression of the town's official sentiments. Sentiment or sentiments. The town is speaking for itself.
I will point out that town is still wrong.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not using this version. I'm, I'm gonna clean it up.
So that's the only change.
So i- is it true, though, that the flag, any flag on the flag pole is an expression of the town's official sentiments? So if we raise a flag of, for India's independence state, I I I question that because I just don't know. I I'm just confused by the by the wording for that.
I I guess it means that the town has endorsed. The celebration in that instance, it was the celebration of Indian, Indian Independence Day. And so in another instance, say somebody asks us to raise the the pride flag. And we would be showing the town's endorsement of support of the pride flag.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I see that.
It's not, you're right, it's not easy to to sort of like. In in all likelihood, this is not going to come up. But let's say there was a a rather provocative, in a negative way, sort of flag that was that was requested. Yeah, I mean, it's a good point. I. Yeah, I think in general, I, my, my, my expectation is that the town is trying to be supportive of all views and all, all perspectives and and representations. And I think that's what the town is sentimenting, is that like, we'll we'll support everyone's views. But it's, but I don't know, it can get a little, it can get a little dicey depending on what's up the firewall.
Yeah, did the, and I I didn't read the actual Supreme Court decision. But, and that was the concern, I think, that we had when we said we wanted to have a policy to begin with. Because there could be some really nasty, you know, requests for flags to be put up. You know, you drive by people's houses and some of the flags they have up these days are absolutely ridiculous. I'll leave it at that.
So I mean, I still, I don't know, so. Select person, St. John, I can, I can reach out to town council, get clarification.
I I mean, that makes sense. Talking through it makes makes sense. So I think we're good.
Okay.
Okay. So we need to have, make a motion to approve the updated flag raising policy.
I'll move to approve the the updated flag raising policy as presented.
Any further comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll vote Chris.
Yes.
Justine.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Armand.
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. All right, item number sixteen is the proposed draft. Or the proposed meeting schedule for the board for the next fiscal year. And it's been presented, I think everybody's had a chance to see it. It includes the, the special town meeting. You know, proposed date, it includes the joint budget meeting proposed date. It includes the annual town meeting proposed date. It also bounces around election days, so I think it covers us pretty well. And we have some flexibility built into that, should events need to cause us to to change a date. At any time due to our schedules or. Any other world events that might affect it as well.
Like that we, we're, we're going off schedule for July, that is.
It's true.
I didn't even notice that. It's just one meeting in July.
No, there's two, there, July twelfth and July twenty-sixth. So it's, which is, we did.
I see.
Normally during the Fourth of July week.
My brother and my sister's birthdays. I guess I'll have to be there for them.
For the meeting or?
They didn't want me at your birthdays.
But on on July twelfth?
Twelve and twenty-sixth, my two siblings' birthday.
Is that right?
So he's approving the dates, that's what he's saying.
I'm approving the dates. I'm good with the dates.
Yeah, okay, so let's approve the proposed schedule.
There, there was only one question, Mr. Chair, and that, and that was if the board, if, we can, obviously, we can adjust this later. Because this is a long time from now. But in the May of twenty-three. Do you, are you, there might be a meeting scheduled, a select board meeting scheduled the day after the proposed. Annual town meeting date. So if annual town meeting is May fifteenth, does the board want to meet the next day? Or do you want to?
We have done that in the past. And actually, this year, the annual town meeting that was postponed. I think we had a meeting scheduled for the next day, anyway. So, and we can see what's on the agenda as time, you know, as we get close to that.
I was going to say, if there's no reason for it, it might be nicer to town staff not to have it the day after.
Very true. And as you saw at the last meeting we had, the, you know, we we were prepared for town meeting. And that's why that meeting was so light on.
That's right.
On items, because it was. There was really nothing. When we get there anyway, there's really nothing for us to talk about unless there's an urgent matter. So, yeah, perhaps we can play it by ear and even cancel it.
Okay. Okay. Not a problem.
And then did you want to talk about the goal setting? Or do we want to just know that that's, keep that in mind for maybe. You know, at like our July twenty, July twelfth meeting, kind of, take a look at some dates.
Yeah, I would think that's probably what we should do. See what, see what everybody's schedule is around that. What does everyone think? Wait until the first meeting that we have in the new fiscal year, and then decide what we want to do. By then, people might have their vacation schedules more tidied up. Than we do now. Although I know when I'm going on vacation, it's the end of June. So, okay. No vote necessary for that?
I don't have a vote on. There's this. Well, because we posted the agenda anyways, but I I'm looking in, maybe I'll look to Becky. Becky, have we, have we had a motion? Have we voted on this in the past? She's denying yes. So now I'm asking the board. I apologize for not having a motion, but.
No, that's okay. I'll I'll move to approve the proposed. Meeting schedule for fiscal year twenty-three. Any further discussion? We'll vote Chris. Justine.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Armand.
Yes.
And I am a yes as well.
Thank you.
All right, next item is the chair report. And so what are, what is the board's thoughts on remote meetings at this point? We sort of went back to remote meetings due to the, the guidance from the Board of Health. Because of the increased number of COVID cases. I don't know where we're at that at this point in the town. So it's open for discussion about whether or not we think the next meeting should be in person. Remote or hybrid? I guess hybrid is is always going to be desirous because that gives people outside the opportunity to tune in. But fully remote or hybrid? Anybody have any thoughts?
Case counts are going down. We're not seeing an increase in hospitalizations, et cetera. So I would feel comfortable with the hybrid. We might want to do a check back with the Board of Health just to confirm. If we feel uncomfortable with it, but.
Yeah, I tend to agree. I think we can probably go. Hybrid.
I agree.
Okay, so we'll schedule the next meeting that is scheduled for June twenty-first will be a hybrid meeting where we'll be set up in the. Room for ourselves and anybody who wants to join us. And we'll be available on Zoom for those who wish to tune in.
Megan, Megan will be taking my place. It'll be nice to her.
We will. All right, so that was one thing. I wanted to comment on and thank all those who were responsible for setting up. And the whole planning of the Memorial Day celebration, which was, which was wonderful. It was great to see the number of people who came out. The way that the high school band worked through their issues, wanting to have seniors have an opportunity to do certain things that evening. So they worked it so that they were able to split it up. They were very accommodating to everybody. So nice work by the town again. And then my last comment is to just wish. The graduating class of twenty twenty-two, congratulations, Manard High School class. Today, they had their, what's now turned into a COVID annual. Car parade was created for COVID, but they're going to continue that tradition, it seems. From what I gathered, the kids really had a great time doing it. And there were certain spots, there were a lot of people. So it looks like the town gets into it as well. Congratulations to the high school graduates. Congratulations to the the school district on another great year for them. And, you know. Onward, I guess, as Representative Hogan would say. That is it for me. Board member reports, Armand.
One of the things I, and I know that this was not something that was inviting for the Fine Arts Grand Opening. Just so happens, I was there because I was actually there to support the, the jazz trio that was there opening. For the Fine Arts. And at the same time, I had the opportunity to also meet Steve Trumbull's family. They were there in full force. It was so nice to see them and being recognized. They had a nice bust of Steve Trumbull unveil there. And Representative Hogan and Senator Eldridge did a great job in presenting the citations. And it was nice to see Fine Arts Theater opened again and active again. Lots of people were there. It was a great, the weather was great. People buying ice cream. So it was, it was a good, it was a nice happening. And just want to, you know, just kind of share that with you. It was a great experience for me. The other piece that already Xana has talked about is the Cultural District Working Group that we put together is. Has a group of about eighteen people, very excited, about trying to get something done here. And actually start, I used to jokingly say, we start, we need to start acting like a cultural district. So there's a lot of things happening and it's very, very exciting. The last piece, and this is a sad thing from my standpoint, I'm hearing that right now. The Beacon Villager, even if you go online to check to see if there's any local news about Maynard, there isn't. So I don't know how is it that we're going to fill that gap. But I think would be nice to have some kind of news in regards to Maynard. I just don't know how we could make that happen. Because there are news that people like to read about, as old fashioned as the Beacon Villager was. But now, even if you go online, you don't see much reporting about Maynard. And I know that, you know, Megan has done a wonderful job with the newsletter and she does that on a monthly basis. I just don't, you know, this is a way for us to incorporate some more muse about the town. Would be nice to get something out. That's just my thoughts. Because that's, that's going to be, it's going to be a gap. I don't know how everybody else feels about that.
If you're looking for a comment, I, I, I agree that it's a loss that there is no news reporting. People are now going to end up relying on social media. That is never, never always true. But I don't know if it's the role of government to create news and news reports. I think they do that in some countries that we don't necessarily like, where the government is controlling the news. So I think it's probably incumbent on, it's probably incumbent on.
I'm just hoping, the reason I'm bringing it up and I'm not asking us to do it, but maybe someone will step up. So we'll just kind of.
Well, that's, that's where I was going with, you know, if there's some type of a. Of of a ground swell for people who, and I have seen some comments online about that as a possibility. But, you know, it's a lot of work. And, you know, Stowe has an independent newspaper and Bolton has an independent newspaper. So some towns have done it. It's just finding the the people who have the the time and the energy and the ability to to create. And then people have to cover the things, you know, people have to, they have to come to these meetings, you know, and not be paid, at least at the outset, one would assume.
We're just hoping that someone that has the love and talent, maybe will, you know, find this as an opportunity. So we're hoping that that's what happens.
Yeah. Anything else?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Jeff?
I'll second everything you said about the preparations for Memorial Day. It was nice to attend, especially after it was canceled last year. I also appreciate all the work that the Maynard Educational Foundation put into the taste this weekend, which I was pleased to attend. I don't know if they are planning to go back to the Elks next year, but if they do, I hope some group finds a way to have a similar. I don't know if they are planning to go back to the Elks next year, but if they do, I hope some group, uh, finds a way to have a similar event because to, to bring that many people downtown and to showcase all the great restaurants we have. Um, and, and we got a perfect day for it. Was, was just a nice, a nice meetup of, of, uh, good planning and good weather and good enthusiasm from everybody and, uh, a lot of good food as well. So, uh, that's, that's it for me.
They may have stumbled onto a better way, which.
I, yeah.
It's almost like Restaurant Week, you know, kind of thing.
It, it's very, yeah.
It's like a pub crawl with food.
That's it.
Great.
Chris?
I, I, I agree on the, um, Maynard Education Foundation's, um, um, what do they call them? Motion?
Taste and motion.
Taste and motion.
Taste and motion. It was fun. I mean, it was a lot of fun, but there was, I would have liked to see more restaurants involved because there was a lot of restaurants that weren't involved that were, you know, open. But it was difficult. I, I, I didn't, I mean, I, I, it must have been difficult for some of the, the restaurant folks that were providing certain things for people while still trying to be open and kind of being a mix of people that were part of the MEFA, you know, and then part of the, you know, the regular customer base. But it was, it was a great event. It was a lot of fun and perfect weather too. You couldn't ask for better weather. A lot would get a little warm a couple of times, but it was fun. Um, also, Justine and David were both at the, um, David snuck out, but I don't want to say that. Um, the, the opening ceremonies for the, um, the Relay for Life, which has been a, um, staple in Maynard now for close to, um, fifteen and twenty years. And it was, you know, a great event. So was happy to, um, represent us as a group and also Keith, who wasn't unable to attend that, that, that event as well. But it was, it was a nice, um, opening ceremonies and a successful event. So it was fun to be a part of that. And that's it for me.
Thank you. Justine?
The only thing I want to do is echo your congratulations to you for the class of twenty twenty-two, obviously. Um, I also wanted to, uh, just because I'm privy to a little bit of that because I have a member of the class of twenty-two. Um, one thing that does eventually make it on to the school websites is, you know, where the kids go. Because I think sometimes everybody gets caught in, up in the narrative of, of, you know, whether the school is competitive or whether kids are going to go to great colleges or, or what their plans are afterwards. And just kind of sitting here looking at it quickly, you know, we have students that are going to WPI, UNH, Xavier, Clark, uh, Roger Williams, UMass, American, Drexel, uh, NYU, Syracuse, Marist, North Carolina State, Ithaca, um, Grinnell, Wheaton, you know, and the list goes on and on. I mean, it, you know, and, and really they, they're all going to some, they're, they're going to some really great places. Um, I really wanted to touch base. I didn't get a chance to before the guidance kept, before tonight's meeting. Um, because I know that not everybody has the track to continue on with college. And I'm sure that there are other, um, there are other students that have other plans. Um, and I wish all of them luck with what, with what they do and where they go, um, from here. So I wanted to say that. I also don't know this, what happened tonight, but I wanted to commend the girls softball for, um, winning the Central Mass Championship. I think today they were going out to Greenfield at six o'clock to play the state championship. Um, but I have not heard anything yet. So, um, but I did want to congratulate them on that because basically they went last year, they were in, I believe I heard last place. And this year they finished first. So it's quite a turnaround.
I just want to piggyback a little bit on, on the graduating class because I'm kind of a artsy type of person. So nine of the seniors are actually pursuing music. And, um, it, it's nice to see that too. Um, so it shows, yes, we're, uh, you know, cultural district, but you could see musicians. And also when I went to see Into the Woods, they, uh, two or three of the seniors are, are pursuing, you know, uh, voice and singing. So it's nice to see that we do have a lot of talent in this little town. And, uh, it's always amazing, you know, to Justine's point, it happened the same thing when my girls graduated, they went on to great colleges and, and for a small district, uh, we do a great job.
Great. So everybody enjoy the weekend. We'll see you at hopefully a town meeting and, uh, where it will be bright and sunny.
We'll see.
Where it will be bright and sunny. And, uh, we will be able to get through our town meeting. So is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor can raise your hand. Thank you all.
See you Saturday. Have a great night.
Night.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Bye, guys.